As soon as the cameras start to roll.
It's like FDR.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Issaquah City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting this Tuesday, March 24th, 2015. And no, your eyes don't deceive you. We did not just expand the council to 10 seats. We've just got some extra chairs up here. And but the first on the agenda tonight, we've got, we've got five major items. First will be the State of the Court address, followed by Quira Eight presentation, followed by Southeast 62nd Street Extension Project presentation, followed by the Cities Qua Initiative. I'm interested in hearing more about that. And then we're going to take a look at the citizens' input for council goal-setting. Those results, we'll be reviewing those. So, starting with those, starting with the State of the Court address, Judge Scott Stewart, welcome.
Thank you. You took away my introduction. I think all of you know my name is Scott Stewart, and I have the honor of serving as the Isquah Municipal Court Judge now for, I think, about seven years, seven and a half years. And once a year, you folks allow me to come in and present, kind of give you a background of what we're doing and what the state of the court is. You gave me half an hour. You gave me 15 minutes the first time I did this, and we took four minutes.
Scott.
Yes.
If you would speak into the microphone-
Gotcha, okay.
-so all your fans at home can hear you too.
As long as they don't confuse me with George Clooney, because that's typical whenever I'm on camera. You gave me 15 minutes the first time I did this, and we took 40 with questions. I'm hoping I can fill my half an hour, but I'm thinking it might be a little quicker than that, which probably will be appreciated. The first slide I put up, I haven't done this in the past, but I decided it might be a good idea. You folks sit in here as the council, but this is also our courtroom, so to give you an idea of what we do and how often this room gets used by us in any given month. This is this particular month. And as you can tell, I just went over this with Ms. Campo. We have court essentially every day of the week at some level with, during the month of March, for instance, with the single exception of the 17th, for whatever reason, the 17th fell through. Every Monday, well, essentially, over the weekend, I'm available to law enforcement, and I contact the jail to make sure, for anybody that's booked into the jail, I review probable cause statements to determine whether or not we need to hold them. And then we bring them in on Monday morning and either hold them in the jail if we view them as someone that poses a danger to the community, or they're released on conditions. So every Monday on 2:30, we're in court. Usually takes only about an hour. It's a relatively quick court date. And the goal is obviously to get the folks out of jail that we can release to the community, but for purposes of protecting the community, keep the folks in jail that need to stay in. And then the calendars kind of break up. We have, every Friday, we have a half-morning, I mean, every Friday morning, we have court. It's typically new arraignments, jury call, but we also have contested hearings. Those are traffic tickets where we have a prosecutor involved. We also, on the first Wednesday of every month, have traffic tickets. The morning calendar is without a prosecutor. The afternoon calendar is a mitigation hearing, morning calendar being contested. And then the rest of it are pre-trials. Tuesdays and Thursdays throughout the month, we do in custody calendars with our jail, where folks are brought over. That, a lot of the cases we deal with are folks that are in custody now, and we've done it twice a week so that we can address them as soon as possible. Hopefully, moving folks out of custody were appropriate, but allowing the folks to move the cases through as much as we can. One of the reasons that I wanted to put this up here is if you look on the 3rd and the 10th of March, and it differs every month, we've added what we call our young adult calendar. I'm part of that, a group of folks that deal with drugs in the community, and we've noticed, and I think I've talked about this before, that we have a unique issue. I don't think it's unique necessarily to Issaquah, but it's kind of unique to the east side a little bit. There's a heroin issue that kind of developed out of the Oxycontin, and we deal with a significant number of young people. And by young people, I mean folks under the age of 25. They come into our court with heroin issues. And one of the problems we run into the past is we'd address the cases, they'd come into court, we'd set it for a review hearing. The review hearing would be four to six weeks out. They'd wait until the last minute to do whatever I asked them to do, again, alcohol-drug evaluation or whatever. Then they scheduled it the day before, we'd set it out again, and it would be 60 to 90 days before we'd actually get these folks moving in the direction we wanted to move. So what we created was a young adult calendar, where if someone's released into the community, I typically require them to be back in court within five or six days. And I expect them to have been in contact with a treatment facility at that point, and then we bring them in a week to two weeks later. And it's moving them much faster towards getting into treatment, keeping them out of the system. We'll talk about that a little bit more as we go through this. And a lot of the stories right now are anecdotal because they're still in the system. I can't talk about them in great detail. We have one of the gals that's on probation, that we have her booking photo, and then we have her now. And she actually volunteered to put it in front of you folks, and I didn't feel comfortable doing that because she's still in the system, but it's amazing. We have, if you were to talk to your prosecutor, talk to your public defender, talk to your probation officer, with these young folks, the number of folks that we have, within just in the last year, year and a half succeeded in, they're the ones that succeeded in getting drugs, but we're helping getting them off drugs. We have one gal that's a dental hygienist, one gal that rather than seeing Cory, she has Taco Time. I mean, it's, she works there, and it's just been a pretty successful program that we've just started within the last year. And I don't know anyone else that's doing it, but we're targeting young folks, Tuesdays at 11:00, where we're making them come in on a regular basis, holding them accountable, and making them get into treatment. It seems to be working. With regard to criminal cases, we break them into two categories as a general rule in the criminal justice system, at least at the misdemeanor level. We have what we call criminal non-traffic and criminal traffic. Our criminal non-traffic cases are up this year. Last year, we had 540 criminal non-traffic. This year, we have 767. Domestic violence has gone up a little bit. It's pretty consistent as far as the percentage. The big difference we see is with theft, 129 to 236, and criminal trespass has gone from 37 to 113. And this is a direct relation, at least from our perspective, to the issues with some of the drugs that we're dealing with. I think law enforcement has gotten kind of focused on it, and they're dealing with their, with seeing people in the park that don't belong in the park, checking up on what they're doing, and they find out that those folks are involved in drug activity, and they end up getting arrested for criminal trespass, or trespass, then ultimately arrested. We see them in the system, and then we have a chance to kind of use the system to motivate them and push them away from drugs, get them into treatment, and things like that. The other numbers, I don't know if folks are interested in. PDP stands for possession of drug paraphernalia, possession of stolen property, minor in possession, and they break down. But the majority of stuff we see here is domestic violence, theft, and criminal trespass. One of the anomalies this year and other disorderly conduct makes up 34 of those 107 cases. Again, we think that's directly related to drug use, and, but we're tackling it, and with probation stuff, we've been relatively successful. This is the criminal traffic. Alcohol-related offenses are down. That's good. These are DUIs, physical controls, negligent driving in the first degree. We had 109 in 2013. We have 68 in 2014. These are the less minor, the more minor traffic offenses, folks that are driving without a license and stuff like that. Makes up a big chunk of the criminal traffic. One of the significant factors that we have to deal with as a court is that these cases are much more intensive as far as monitoring. We're dealing with folks with drug issues, whereas here, you're primarily dealing with poverty issues, folks that can't afford to get a driver's license and stuff like that, and trying to motivate them to get a license, with the single exception of the DUIs, but those fortunately have fallen over the last year. This is the hearings that we had in court this year, take place here. We go back to that first slide that showed the calendar. We had 1,166 arraignments. That's new charges of folks that are filed into our court, where they enter the plea. You were talking about the form up there, they enter plea guilty or not guilty, as to whether or not they're charged. 2,464 pre-trials. That number is relatively large. It's large heavily because of the folks, mostly the youth that are booked into the jail. Usually, they're released the first time they're booked into jail, and then they mess up the conditions. They don't show up for court, and they're booked in again, and now they're held on relatively low bail. And it might take multiple court dates to get their case resolved. So, 2,464 is a significantly bigger number than 1,011, but it might simply be that one person has three court dates, whereas in the past, with the more simple cases like driving with license suspended, it would be less significant court dates. 228 motions, that's where folks are arguing to suppress evidence. Readiness is their case that is set for trial. Sentencings are low because most sentencing takes place at pre-trial. And then finally, review hearings, that's dealing with the folks with alcohol-drug issues, mental health issues, stuff like that. Probation is working. You folks were kind enough to give us a probation officer a certain number of years ago. Our probation officer presently has 137 cases on her caseload. That doesn't include folks that have warranted, who she hasn't seen yet. Of those, 96 of them fit into what we call our more serious categories. 60 DUIs, 36 domestic violence. And then she even breaks these down further. Of the folks that she sees, 36 of the individuals that she sees have alcohol problems, 13 have drug problems, 39 have alcohol and drug problems, one just has mental health issues. Then you have 11 with mental health and alcohol problems, two with mental health and drug problems, and 10 with mental health, alcohol, and drug problems. So a relatively difficult population that she's working with and trying to get the resources that she has, and hold them accountable, and bring them into court when they're not following through with the treatment, asking for sanctions, not asking for sanctions, trying to learn what to do so we can keep them out of the justice system. One of the cool things we've seen, in 2012, and we didn't keep the number of total UA's. We UA people a lot. UA stands for urinalysis. It's one of the ways we can check and see whether somebody's using. And these UA's have to do with folks that are on probation. If you're on probation, a lot of them are on random call-ins, so if someone is being told that they're going to be monitored by probation, they have to call in every day, and they're given a color, green, blue, red, whatever. And if their color comes up, they have to submit a UA that day to see whether or not they've been using while they're on probation. In 2012, I don't, we don't have the exact number of the total number of random UA's that were done, but 42% of the ones that we did in 2012 came back positive. That's the first year when we started monitoring these people closely. 2013, there were 454 UA's, 138 came back positive, or 30%. In 2014, 545 UA's, 129 came back positive, so we're down to 24%. We're working with the same people. It just appears from the numbers that we're giving them the treatment that they need, and they're becoming less mercantilism, yes.
Could you say, before you move on from that, a little bit more about that? That's a, I mean, the previous slide, the numbers were shocking in the wrong direction. These are really positive.
This slide here?
Yeah, and then the next slide, the UA positives. How is the probation really making, officer, making a difference there?
It has to do with close monitoring and accountability. I mean, well, first of all, I'm going to go back to this slide. It's scarier than it looks, and this number here is the number that kind of jumps out. But what happens with our, with our public defender, and your public defender works very closely with a couple of chemical dependency, mental health treatment providers that are in the community, that provide resources, you know, at no cost to us. The public defender's found folks that will come into our jails. So let's say the public defender has a client that is arraigned. I release the person because it's a criminal trespass. I set conditions, and then they don't show up for their court date. Ultimately, they're arrested on a warrant when they didn't show up for their court date. Now, I'm not going to release them. They're going to sit in jail because they got their one chance to show up for free without posting bail, and most of them can't post any bail. That court, the public defender wants their client out of jail. So let's say, can we set this for this Thursday, Your Honor? Our goal is to try to have something worked out for them on Thursday. We set it for Thursday. The system automatically creates Thursday as a pre-trial. We show up on Thursday, they're not ready yet. So they say, we have to set this over till next Thursday, or next Tuesday. They set it over next Tuesday, now it's two pre-trials. So that's reflected as two pre-trials, when really, you're dealing with the same person, and the public defender working very hard to get that person into treatment. And we do a lot of treatment releases. Sound Mental Health is one of the agencies they work very closely with. So the numbers are relatively big, big here, for instance, but it's big because you're dealing with the population, with the, especially some of these young people, that require multiple court dates in order to get them out of the system, into the treatment. And it's actually, while the number's big, it's been pretty successful, at least over the short term. These folks are, probation, you know, it's a limited resource. You have one probation officer. You have thousands of people that you're dealing with. So who probation gets is the most difficult cases that we have. And what she's able, have been able to do, Ms. Vanek, our probation officer, is work with those folks. She not only holds them accountable, I mean, I get probation reports, I don't know what, they're open, obviously, the files are open to the public, but I get probation reports where you can see how detailed she is with regard to explaining to me literally what's going on with this particular individual. But she's also helping that individual get into treatment, where the individual claims that they're going to treatment, she's able to follow up on it. So she's holding them accountable. And what happens with the UA's is we see that slowly but surely they're not using. I mean, she's, I hear a lot of the stories from probation, the prosecutor, just overhearing them as much as anything else when they're talking about some of the success stories, and that's where a lot of them come. I mean, she's had a lot of success stories with folks that I'm not seeing, because keep in mind, I only get to see folks that are having problems. And so when I send, when I send somebody to probation officer Vanek, she's monitoring them, and then I'll see them at the end when they're successful, and we all clap because this person made it through the system. These numbers reflect how successful she's been. Here, over half the folks, when they gave a UA, are coming back positive for alcohol or drugs. And here we're down to a quarter. So almost, almost half, or not almost half, I guess, but 40% down to less than 25%. And that's just a product of close monitoring and her following up. She knows these people. She knows how often, who needs to come in on a more regular basis and stuff like that. She's a success story. I mean, she does a great job.
Thank you.
Hope that answers her. Civil cases. In 2013, we had 7,345 cases. Civil cases in a municipal court, we're talking about traffic infractions. In 2014, we have 8,676. The traditional traffic infractions, which are law enforcement-based, where an officer pulls you over and gives you a ticket at the window, those dropped from 2961 to 2160. Photo enforcement went up from 4114 to 6335. Of the infractions that we saw, 2013, 3285 were simply paid. 4,183 were paid in 2014. We had 217 contested hearings in 13, 565 in 14. The number of committed, so these are the folks that challenged the ticket. These are the folks where the folks that challenged the ticket won the ticket. Resulted in a not committed finding. What's interesting, the officers now work in their patrol vehicles, and so a significant percentage of not committed's are literally a couple of Washington State troopers, and I think there's two of them, that hit a button in their computer, and rather than send their case to Isquah District Court, send their case to Isquah Municipal Court. So I end up here, and I look down, and the ticket occurred in Monroe. And we have no jurisdiction over that ticket, so I ended up getting found not committed. But these are typically, this is a small percentage, 13 percentage of the, 18%. 18% of the tickets requested contested. 98 of those are not committed. It's something like 3% that come back not committed. Something like that. 3% requests contested. There we go. And then these are mitigation hearings. These are just where folks have admitted they committed the violation and have requested a reduction in the fine. And last bit of slides, I continue to work with Isqah High School. I'm there Thursdays and Fridays usually of every week. I teach a class there called Street Law. It's become a pretty popular class, although I'm, I had a beard up until, I grew a beard from November, and then my beard would get gray, and the students started calling me grandpa, and so the beard's gone because I got tired of grandpa. I'm on the education committee, and I'm actively involved there. One of the cool things for me this last year is I was selected to, we get rated by the attorneys, Mr. Sheriff, for instance, if every year, it's a little thing where judges get rated every four years, excuse me. And I score relatively high on judicial demeanor, so they actually asked me to present on the judicial demeanor on the training this year, which I took as an honor, and I did relatively well at that. We have developed those court calendars to more closely monitor use with drug issues. I think that makes us unique amongst, I don't know any other court that's doing that. We just recognize the problem. If you go to some of the training, there are, there are courts, we have drug courts. We can't do a drug court because we're a municipal court. There's veteran courts. Seattle has the People's Court, all kinds of different courts that they work with. We just kind of recognized one of the issues that we were dealing with that made us unique was all of these 22 and 23-year-olds that were showing up, that were addressing heroin issues. We created that court, and it seems to be working. It strictly aims at them. Ms. Campo, you should know, presented at the District and Municipal Court Management Conference. She remains on their executive committee. They asked her to present based upon Isquah's lean concepts. And the feedback that I got from that, you know, I, you folks, I'm sure, all go to conferences. I go to conferences. They usually have their one or two key speakers that are supposed to be the exciting speakers. They pay a lot of money for, and then the other folks are members of the committee. Hers was the highest rated presentation at the conference, speaking on behalf of the way we do things in Isquah with regard to lean concepts. So good that they've asked her to come back and do the presentation again this year, which I think we should be proud of. And we've improved our website. We're working, we've added forms to the website. We're hoping to get a situation where they can do contested mitigations on the website itself. This upcoming year, continue to do this, students in the classroom. I'm actually working at Skyline now. They have a trial team. They asked me to come up and help with their trial team. I don't know why. I just threw this one up because I was putting it together. My, your prosecutor, your public defender, me went up to the middle school and did a career day, and we're talking about doing some more of that in the future. I've been asked to be the keynote speaker at this year's State Providers Conference. The folks that do alcohol-drug treatment, mental health treatment, have conferences. They've asked me to be the keynote speaker on working with judges. And after they asked me, they told me it was 90 minutes, so I have to come up with a way to be interesting for 90 minutes, which makes me a little nervous, but we'll see. We hired former Isquah Sergeant Scott Trailers, our court security. I think you folks have known, we've been looking for court security for a while. That serves multiple purposes from our court perspective. We've had a limited number of incidents in court where we really needed security. On a couple of occasions, Officer Mulvick was here, and he's amazing, but he's not always here. And we think that former Sergeant Traile will be very helpful there. It will also allow us to use one practical, just one practical example. We have a female probation officer. We do UA's. She does UA's as part of her practice with folks that just come in to meet with her independent at court. We also do UA's in court. If somebody shows up for court and they appear to be under the influence, and it happens almost every calendar, or we just, they haven't done their evaluation, they seem to be beaten around the bush, we'll order a UA. With a male UA, we can't do them observe, observe because we have a female probation officer. And at least once a month, we catch somebody, they actually, they carry urine on their bodies because they know the risk of UA. They'll walk in there, it'll test at room temperature rather than body temperature, and we have very, it creates difficulties. How do you prove? And ultimately, having Officer Traile present's going to allow us to avoid that, and allow us to have more accountability for folks to make sure that they're following through with their treatment requirements. And then we're going to continue, we have some ideas for the development of court procedures aimed at the young folks. My goal is to eradicate that issue, at least with regard to Isquah, and hopefully let our system be viewed as one of those systems that's truly working out there with regard to that particular issue. And that's what I got. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions or comments?
I did want to ask you.
Sure.
So there are other organizations within the community that concern themselves with drug abuse, especially with young adults, some of the same population that you're talking to. Are you, do you have any connections, like the Drug Free Community Coalition, for example?
You know, I'm limited because of my role as a judge with regard to how active I can be. I'm on the committee, I don't, what do we call the group? You and I are almost always on the-
Question for drug.
And I've talked to folks as part of, as part of that group. One of the things that we've talked about, and I picked this up, not all my idea, I stole it from one of the veterans' courts, is one of the veterans' courts in eastern Washington does a, the judge will literally order the veteran, and this, the veterans are great to work with because the community's very supportive. There's lots of resources for veterans that are out there. We don't have a huge veteran population, at least in our court, but the judge will order them to go to these, these meetings where he's brought together all of these community services at one place, and that they can come and have access to all of these tools. And the public defender and the prosecutor and I have talked along with probation about working on that. I mean, we have to make it worthwhile with regard to the providers, but as an idea, when I, when I have Tommy in front of me that has a heroin issue, and I'm trying to get him into treatment, when I'm done telling him what he needs to do, I'm then turning him loose on the community and hoping that he goes and does it. And we're looking at the possibility of bringing folks to Tommy, but there wouldn't be, there'd be seven or eight folks, so that they can get a, like a one-size-fits-all. But I don't know that we're there yet. But as far as my involvement, I've talked to them, but I'm not, I can't be an advocate. I'm an advocate for the system. I'm certainly an advocate for getting these folks off of drugs, and holding them accountable when they commit crimes, but I'm not actively involved with, independent of that.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay.
Josh, and then Eileen.
Thanks. So Judge, as we know, you use the council chambers here for the municipal court. And there's been some conversations and discussions about looking into the idea of a new city hall facility at some point in the future, potentially. And so my question is, are there things that the court needs or would be of benefit to the operation of the court, in your opinion, that we do not currently have because of the shared facility that you have to use?
Sure. I could probably come up with a whole list. On a very basic level, trials are difficult in the court. As you know, one of the issues that we have is everything has to be on the record. It's hard to put things on the record when we don't have places to put jurors. And so what happens, we put jurors in this room here, off to the side, but this room can hear what goes on in the courtroom. And so if you've ever walked by one of our jury trials, we're all clustered up there, talking quietly into a microphone so that the jurors can't hear. I mean, it's, we make it work. I have a little board that I, I don't know if it's, it's right down there. You can see the board, what I put up there, which protects me from the jurors, because we're supposed to be, I'm supposed to be separated from the jurors, but I'm actually sitting next to juror number one during a jury trial. And it's worked so far, but it, it does create issues separating the parties just on a simple basis. I mean, we use the space to the extent, but we're getting busy, and we need to be able to separate jurors, and we need places for public defender to meet. One of the issues with regard to the public defense standards that came down was the issues with public defenders having a place to meet their clients. Obviously, they should meet their clients outside the courtroom, but at the courtroom where it's not necessarily out there for the public, where it can be a private conversation, and we have those type of limitations. But we're making it work with what we have now, but certainly a more typical courtroom space would, would benefit the whole system, yeah.
Eileen, then Dolan.
Thank you. Just comments from what I've heard this evening. And we're seeing these numbers reduced, and it is substantial numbers reduction in regards to the young offenders and the drug pieces. I need to thank you, and hopefully, the young persons' court that you have been working with is a part of what is helping to bring those numbers way down. And I think also what the council accepted last year is, is accepting one of the goals is safe and drug-free. Isquah-
Sure.
-is another one of those pieces that is helping to bring those numbers down. But to me, that's a large number reduction, and I think, hopefully, those numbers will continue to decrease for the good of the person, but also for the good of Isquah. So I guess a thank you to you for hanging on to this goal of working with the young people and the success in what's happening with those young people. So we want to see their lives enriched and growing forward to being part of the citizens of Isquah in, in good behavior, and helping Isquah, as opposed to where they could potentially have been taking their lives previously.
It's amazing for me, because I will see them out in the community, working real jobs. And, and, and when you, when you talk to somebody in court that's 22, that's not going to school, that, you know, dropped out in 10th grade, is not going to school, not working, and then suddenly you see them, and they've gotten their GED. We found a couple of really kind of cool programs through Bellevue College, and they've gotten their treatment. They're not using, and they haven't been using, you know, I was talking to the mayor, I met with the mayor yesterday, and I was talking about him, because I, you know, I've spent the last 10 years of my life trying to lose 30, 40 pounds, and it's a lot of work. And from what I've been told by the experts, it's nothing compared to once, you know, if you're 17 and decided that you're going to use heroin, once they're addicted to heroin. It's pretty impressive, and pretty amazing by Ms. Vanek as much as anything else, that we're helping these kids get off drugs, because that particular drug, from whatever I've, everything I've been told, the impact it has is huge. And, but we've seen, I mean, like I said, they're anecdotal. I mean, there's probably 10 stories that we see that we're all very proud of, and it's, it's the, the young person that's really accomplished the hard part of it. But we like to think we've played a role in getting them where they're at, and it's pretty cool.
It takes all of it. But I, from what I understand, it is a very, very difficult drug to kick the habit of, and so the successes we have should be highlighted.
I think so. And I think that Isquah should be proud of it, because I think we're doing as good a job as anybody, so.
Thank you.
Thanks. So, two-part question. First part, is the municipal court's jurisdiction the, the city of Isquah, or is it larger than that?
Well, we serve Isquah, St. Okwame, and North Bend. But if it doesn't happen in one of those jurisdictions, and I've had to pull out maps every once in a while when I talked about those traffic tickets, because it'll say milepost, you know, 13, then I have to pull up a map to do this occur in Isquah. And because every once in a while, the trooper who clearly meant to write it in the King County District Court gets it right. I mean, he writes it in Isquah, so I have the jurisdiction. And those have been falling off, but from talking to our prosecutor, she's actually made calls to Washington State Patrol, and they just kind of blow her off, so.
So the reason I asked about that is, the second part of my question is, you showed some statistics around property crime, and a substantial increase between 2013 and 2014 in property crime. I think you had criminal trespass, and you had, there was another one that was a, that was a very, very large increase. It looked like a 60 or 70 or 80 theft percent increase. Is that, is that fairly indicative of what's in the city of Isquah?
You know, most of our, you probably have Target, Costco, Home Depot, probably count for the vast, and I think part of it might be just aggressiveness by their in-store security, because usually it's initiated by an in-store security officer who then has contact with a police officer. Most of those folks, at least from my perspective, seem to be the same folks that we're dealing with, with regard to drug use. The criminal trespass, I think there's been, and I may be completely wrong on this, but it seems to me that there's likely been a concerted effort by law enforcement to, and as part of your whole program, when you see some of these folks that, that are using drugs, and clearly using drugs in parks and stuff like that. We get a lot of folks that have been trespassed from parks based upon being caught using parks, and they don't seem to get, they can't go back to the parks. So I'm sure we have two or three defendants, for instance, that have four or five criminal trespasses, because they just keep going back. And, and I think that's where you're seeing the increase there. The other place you get criminal trespasses is where somebody's trespassed from Target, Costco, or Home Depot- Costco, or Home Depot, and told not to come back, and they do come back. But the malicious, when I think property crime, I'm saying malicious mischief, and we didn't break those numbers down, because those aren't real big as far as breaking things. They're mostly folks that are going back to the parks where they've been trespassed in the parks based upon having been caught there using drugs.
Okay. So, that's not reflective of, you know, people's houses getting broken?
No. We, we are very limited, those would be, usually be filed as a burglary. We have a couple of our more serious mental health cases where they got felony declined, where they were filed as burglaries, and they get kicked back as felonies, because these are just, and I can think of two in the last two years, where the, the person just, somebody comes home and there's somebody in their house. And it's usually somebody with a mental health issue. And they get, they get filed here. And that's the type of person, most of the folks that you see on probation are going to be domestic violence or DUI, but that type of person is the type of person that will end up on probation, because we need to watch them very closely. They usually get a stern lecture from me on when you enter somebody's home in the state of Washington, you run the risk of some very bad things happening. But we don't get a lot of that in home. Then, now, they may at super court, but that doesn't typically get filed here.
Thank you. That's very reassuring.
You bet.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Scott. Oh, you did have a question, sorry.
Quick question.
Sure.
So, you showed an increase in the speed, the camera tickets?
Sure.
What do you attribute that to?
The road is more travel.
Yeah. That's, the road is more travel is what it appears to us.
That's a significant increase in traffic to account for that. That was a fairly significant increase in numbers.
It's a, it's a thousand people, a thousand more tickets.
Yeah. And not every one of them's going to be ticketed, so.
The chief has to report on that. He showed us to be much more on the road. The road there is, and there's way more travel than that except for the last five years.
It's a shortcut to get to the Highlands, and that's what you run into. And it's an interesting part of our, of our job, because we do photo, we do mitts by mail or contested by mail. And if you ever want to just enjoy, the folks that are very much opposed to cameras write some very interesting letters to us, so.
And we haven't done any modifications to change the standards for ticketing with the cameras?
No. I think the camera kicks on six miles over the speed limit, and so, it's 20, and I think the camera comes on 26 or 27.
20. I think you meant 20.
What's that?
20.
I didn't.
Okay.
It's not a, I said camera, it's not a camera, there's a point-to-point, but.
Thanks.
Okay.
Maybe 19. The numbers drop. Scott, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very informative. Thank you.
Okay.
So, next on the agenda, Wyre Eight presentation is Jason Mulvey-Hill-Kuntz here. Jason?
No.
For some reason, Sheldon is up there. Okay.
I'm Sheldon Lynn, Director of Public Works Engineering, and I'm here to introduce Jason Mul, Mulvey-Hill-Kuntz. Sorry, it's a tough one to pronounce. Jason is the watershed coordinator for salmon recovery in the Wyre Eight, which includes the Lake Washington, Cedar, and Smamish watersheds, which is also inclusive of the Issaquah Creek Basin. The Wyre Eight salmon recovery effort began in 1999 when the Chinook salmon were listed under the Endangered Species Act as threatened. Local governments since then, in 2001, in the Wyre Eight came together under an ILA, which has been ongoing since for the purposes of recovery actions for the Puget Sound Chinook salmon. Some of the efforts that the Wyre Eight have been on, taking on in this basin, have actually helped the city and other efforts to support goals, including open space preservation in the city, parks improvements, surface water management, as well as other environmental objectives of the city of Issaquah. Jason's presentation tonight is going to provide an update on the salmon recovery efforts of the Wyre Eight, and it is also intended to give the council some background and context for an action that is currently in front of council for April 6 to approve the renewal of the inter-local agreement for Wyre Eight to continue the salmon recovery efforts. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Jason.
Thank you, Sheldon. I appreciate the introduction. Thank you, council, for having me come and talk to you tonight. I am, let's see, how do I advance the slides? Just a mouse button right there. Perfect, okay. All right. Otherwise, it was going to be a boring presentation. So, again, my presentation tonight is twofold. It's one, it's to give you guys an update on what we've done in terms of progress at recovering Chinook salmon in the watershed. It's a regional coordinated effort of 28 local governments in our watershed, and Issaquah is a member of that group. And we've had great leadership, strong leadership, from former Mayor Eva Freisinger, and currently from Councilmember Eileen Barber, on the Salmon Recovery Council, that it helps provide us with policy guidance in implementing this work. And then, again, we are anticipating to renew our inter-local agreement at the end of 2015, so you all will see that soon, it sounds like. So, to orient you a bit, here's a map of our watershed, and it basically drains all of the area that drains into the Cedar River, into Issaquah Creek, down into Lake Smamish, into Lake Washington, into the Smamish River, the North Lake Washington tributary streams that come into the Smamish River, or into the northern part of Lake Washington, and everything that goes out the Ship Canal and into the Ballard Locks, and then out into Puget Sound, as well as some coastal streams along the Snohomish and King County area that drain directly into Puget Sound. So, it's a big area. We are the most populated, most urban watershed in Puget Sound in the state, in fact. We have two Chinook populations. One, we call the Cedar Population, and they come back in through the Ballard Locks, through the Ship Canal, and they make a right-hand turn at Lake Washington, they go on up into the Cedar River to spawn. And we have a Smamish population, which makes a left-hand turn at Lake Washington, goes on up into Smamish River, some of the North Lake Washington tributary streams, up into Lake Smamish, and then a few of them continue on up into Issaquah Creek. So, familiar territory for you all. The, what I want to get you to get from this map is the shaded areas. That's how we've prioritized areas of our watershed for salmon recovery. The darker green spots are what we call Tier One. That's the highest priority for restoration and protection of habitat. That's where their, the Chinook come back to have their primary spawning areas. The lighter green areas are what we call Tier Two, and those are slightly less important in terms of a habitat. Chinook don't often use them all the time, they will use them sometimes, but they're important areas to maintain as additional space for Chinook to use in case something were to happen, like a landslide or something that cuts off access to one of those Tier One areas. And then, the, the area that's kind of a gray or beige color, that's most of our urban area, the habitat there really doesn't provide a lot of value for Chinook at this point in time, but it's still a very important area in terms of water quality and water flow. And I do want to note that our lake shore and the Smamish River and all of our nearshore is Tier One as well, because those are important migratory areas for the juvenile salmon as they leave our watershed and go out to Puget Sound. Oops. Okay, a quick timeline. As Sheldon mentioned, Chinook were listed as threatened in 1999 under the Endangered Species Act. And local governments in our watershed at that time, they kind of said, well, okay, we've got this listing, what are we going to do about it? Each of us bears some responsibility here, and they had two main concerns. One was, they didn't really want the federal government to come in and tell them what to do in terms of recovering Chinook. They said, well, we want to be kind of the masters of our own destiny and be able to determine what we want to do, local determination on it. The second was the potential for there to be lawsuits for take under Endangered Species Act rulings. And so, the, the local governments decided, hey, why don't we get together, instead of each one of us tackling this individually, which would be really challenging, let's get together, do this in a coordinated, proactive way, and demonstrate to the federal government that we're implementing this, this listing. So, in 2001, they came together under an inter-local agreement to do that. Between 2001, 2005, they developed a plan, which is the plan that you all have ratified as your plan for salmon recovery, as well as the rest of the 28, or 27 local jurisdictions. 2006, we began implementing that plan, and we've been doing that for the past nine years. The federal government did recognize that plan and adopted it in 2007, so it's a federally recognized plan. And in 2015, as I mentioned, we're nearing that 10-year mark of our salmon recovery implementation effort. And really, that was the, the 10-year mark of our plan was created basically because that was a long enough period of time, people could kind of wrap their brains around that. And we, we have 50-year goals in our plans, so our plan for salmon recovery is really long-term, but we set out a kind of a 10-year first sort of suite of implementation activities to kind of gauge how we were doing and kind of assess where we were at that point in implementation. And then, again, the inter-local agreement that enables that work to happen is ending in 2015 as well. Our work is part of a bigger puzzle. It's one chapter of the Puget Sound salmon recovery plan, so there are 14 watersheds in Puget Sound, each one has a plan like we do. Those are rolled up into that Puget Sound Regional Salmon Recovery Plan. That plan is in turn rolled up into the action agenda for Puget Sound recovery. So, salmon recovery is a huge cornerstone foundational aspect of Puget Sound recovery, and I really want you guys to understand that as well. And then, leadership. The effort is guided, as I mentioned, by our Wyre Eight Salmon Recovery Council, and that's the body that Councilmember Barber sits on. It's, includes members, representatives from each of the 28 local governments. And then, we have a series of stakeholder members as well, that represent community and environmental organizations, King Conservation District, Business, Water and Sewer Districts, our state and federal partners in salmon recovery, and then we have a couple interested citizens as well. And the, the real benefit of this group is it's really important for fostering that regional collaboration and regional governance on this issue. But it also, I've seen it kind of spread into other issues as they're gathered around the table, they, they engage in a variety of different collaborative efforts there. And then, it also leverages what each one of those governments and one of those entities brings to the table for the collective whole of our watershed. The, the role of that group really boils down to five things. It's about directing implementation, providing us with policy guidance, builds the capacity for all of us to do this work. It advances a funding strategy for us to get this stuff, this stuff done, and it supports all the education and outreach goals that we've set out for ourselves. In this, I don't really want to scare you with this, but I want to, this is our cost-share table for all of our 28 local governments. Each, each group provides, each government provides annually a cost share to enable this work to happen. I've highlighted Issaquah's cost share. And, and your cost share is, is based on a formula that it takes into account assessed value, population, and the area of your jurisdiction. Really, that's a proxy for what the impact of your jurisdiction is on, on salmon recovery, on the watershed. And then, it's proportionally divided up among all those 28 local governments. And this is your 2015 cost share. So, what does that money fund? What does that inter-local agreement cost share fund? Well, it, it supports a small staff team that I manage, three and a half staff, and we are focused on coordinating the Salmon Recovery Council that I mentioned, as well as its associated committees. It supports our work to go meet and partner with our state and federal partners on this work. And it really supports a lot of the recovery plan implementation. Our plan has 1,200 actions that it calls for, for us to get this stuff done. So, our team spends a lot of time working with local partners to figure out what are the right actions to do at specific times, prioritizing work and sequencing it. And then, we track, we track our progress, we track project implementation, we report out to partners, and we, we really maintain a technical basis for our work. So, we have a technical coordinator that works on bringing in the best available science, new information, to make sure that the work that we're doing is, is based in science and is as technically supported as possible. And while we're focused on Chinook salmon as our, as our main focus for our work, salmon recovery is inherently multifaceted, and so, the work that we engage in integrates with many of these other regionally important activities that many, many of you are aware of, that, that range from fish passage at the Ballard Locks, to outreach and education, hatchery and harvest management, water quality, stormwater management, and ultimately, Puget Sound recovery, as I mentioned before. So, what does our plan tell us needs to happen? Well, it really lays out why our salmon populations are in trouble, gives us our goals and our priorities, strategies for addressing why they're in trouble, and then tells us what we need to measure and monitor to make sure that we're doing the work that we need to do. There are three types of actions that it calls for, your typical on-the-ground Habitat Restoration and Protection Actions. It also includes land use and regulations and planning actions, and that's largely the purview of local governments to make that work happen. But it also outlines outreach, education, and stewardship activities that we need to do to create broader public understanding and awareness of salmon recovery, and what, what they can do to make sure there are proper conditions for Chinook to thrive in our watershed. So, what have we accomplished in nearly 10 years? And this map, I apologize, it's slightly hard to read, but I want you to just see that there are red and blue dots that demonstrate the projects that we've completed or that are active in our watershed, so you can kind of see that we, we've spread our work across the watershed in many of those Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three areas, so we're really doing work across the watershed. We have about, I think it's 100 projects that have either been completed or are currently actively being implemented. And the one thing I want you to note is that we've, although we've done all that work, we're only about 22% of the way done with what we said we were going to do in 10 years. And that is not because we don't know what we need to do, we have a great plan that has a, gives us a lot of priority strategies. It's really a resource limitation issue. It's, it's, we did not get the money that we anticipated we would get in our plan, and so, we've fallen short in that regard. Yeah. So, funding. As I mentioned, we've got those 100 projects that are moving forward. From 1998 to last year, we have allocated over $15 million of local funding that comes to our watershed to allocate to projects, and that comes from, up to 2012 was coming from the King Conservation District, and then, from 2012 to the present, it's coming through the King County Flood Control District as cooperative watershed management grants. And then, in the same period of time, we have allocated nearly $20 million of state and federal funding that comes directly to us for allocation to a variety of proposals that come to us from our, our partners in local governments or community organizations as well. And we run an annual grant round every year to allocate those funds, and it's roughly about $2 million a year that we're able to allocate. Issaquah has done really, really well over the years. I was thinking, as I came into town tonight, I thought, wow, you know what? Every time we go out and we do a grant round site visit, we always come to Issaquah. So, I want to give kudos to Sheldon and his staff. Kerry Rittland in particular has really proposed a lot of high-quality projects, really high priorities that have gotten funding over the years. So, you guys have had nine projects that have received over $2.8 million through a variety of grants in that timeframe. So, what do those projects mean on the ground? I pulled together some numbers for you. What it's, what it's meant in terms of habitat benefits is, over 2,600 acres have been protected through acquisition or easements. We've had over 450 acres of riparian area treated, and that includes invasive species removal and replanning with native plants. Over a mile of levees have been set back or completely removed on the Cedar River, which has allowed for a corresponding 73 acres of floodplain restoration and reconnection. And over 8,000 feet of shoreline on Lake Washington, Lake Smamish, has been restored as part of this effort. So, quite a bit of, of work has been accomplished on the ground. Issaquah in particular, I wanted to highlight a few things for you. Issaquah Creek obviously is a high priority for us, as well as for you all. Chinook really need those healthy streamside vegetation and complex stream channels. The city has been great at working to add those elements into the creek systems you guys have jurisdiction over, and has been a great partner in that. Those, those benefit, the benefits of doing that work really are that it provides shade, food sources for salmon, refuge from predators, reduced erosion, and it also helps manage stormwater flows. And specifically, I wanted to highlight a couple of things that Issaquah's done. Obviously, the Salmon Hatchery Dam Removal Project that's happened a few years ago was incredibly beneficial to salmon, and we're, I think, just going to start seeing the benefits of that in the, in both last year, but this year, and then the coming few years, about really what that means in terms of opening up 11 miles of habitat in Upper Issaquah Creek. The Issaquah Creek Waterways Program, the partnership with the county that you all have engaged in, has been huge at acquiring a variety of really high-priority habitats in the, in the Issaquah Creek Basin, so that work's been, been wonderful. And then, some of the more recent work, you guys have done a project on Lewis Creek to And then some of the more recent work, you guys have done a project on Lewis Creek to improve the mouth of that stream as it enters the lake, and also Salmon Run Nature Park within the kind of downtown Issaquah area, as well as Confluence Parks, that we hope to see soon. So a lot of great work.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but before you switch slides, I just want to draw attention to the upper slide, which is the dam, the hatchery dam removal. From an aerial view, it's amazing to see how that is working, and the having that old dam removed, and now the ability for the salmon to actually migrate up, which was an absolute hazard for them in the past. That's a great picture.
Yeah, no, I liked it a lot. Thank you for highlighting that. I've heard from Department of Fish and Wildlife folks that they've actually seen full-grown 45-pound Chinook way up in the upper reaches of the creek that they hadn't been for, you know, probably 60, 70, 80 years. And so that right there is a huge, huge success. So we hope that we continue to see that kind of thing happen. And I want to just give the city a lot of credit for applying your own local funding sources to match grants that we have available, and really leverage our grants, as well as additional state and federal money that you guys have been able to secure by putting up your own local funds to enable this work to happen. So ongoing recovery, the future of salmon, and whether we have them in our local streams really is up to our local communities. We get to decide whether we have them come back every year, and we face a lot of challenges as we move forward. As I mentioned, public support is going to be critical. It's hard to make people aware of the salmon in their streams. We continue to have people that come out and see them and say, they've been here their whole lives, but they didn't realize that salmon were actually in these streams. And political will, you know, this is a long-term effort. We need to continue to engage our elected officials and make sure that they understand why it's valuable that we continue to do this work. Adequate funding, as I mentioned, is critical and something that's challenging to us getting this work done. And then there are uncertainties related to climate change and ocean conditions that make our work challenging as well, moving forward. The nice thing to note there is that largely the work that we've set out in our plan is the type of work that you need to do to make your ecosystem and your communities more resilient to climate change anyway, setting back levees, enabling the river to explore more space, or the creek to explore more space as we get broader, bigger flows that come through, that kind of thing. So we're largely set up to do the kinds of things we need to respond to make our systems more resilient anyway. But then land use pressures. We expect to have a huge influx of people moving to this region, and how we develop and determine what our communities are going to look like moving forward is really going to have an impact on whether we're going to be successful in recovering salmon. And I really want to emphasize that local governments working together really do make a difference. So appreciate that Issaquah is very engaged in that, in that effort. What's next, moving forward? Sheldon largely covered this for you guys, but I'm making presentations to all of our partner local governments on this topic. Between May and July, we'll be working with the draft interlocal agreement document to kind of develop a final version for signature between July and December. And with that, I'll leave you with a few pretty pictures and ask if you have any questions.
Any questions? Nina?
Thank you. I love talking about fish.
Good.
I wish I knew more. And so one thing that I was looking for here that you might just be able to fill in, my curiosity is, how does hatchery and wild run policies or issues involve in these things that you do?
That's a really, really good question. We focus on, basically, we call it the four Hs. The things that are engaged in salmon recovery are habitat, hatcheries, harvest management, and then hydropower, which we really don't have to deal with in Puget Sound, but folks on the Columbia and down in California, they have to deal with that quite a bit. The purview of this group and this effort really is around habitat, so making sure that we are able to create space and areas where Chinook can come back and find the areas they need to spawn and rear their young. We don't really engage in the harvest and the hatchery aspects because that's really the purview of what's called the co-managers, which is the state and the tribes. They are focused on managing the fishery, basically, so they determine what the catch limits are every year, and as well as the hatchery management, which we all hope, and all these pieces come together and fit nicely together, and that's been challenging over time. But the intent is that all of those four H, the work that's going on in all those four Hs, is harmonized and is moving everybody in the right direction. Now, that's idealistic to say, but that's the intent. Hatcheries are intended to support populations that are very low and needing to increase, and so we look at that as a way to support the work while we're trying to recover the wild populations. Ultimately, you know, we hope we don't need hatcheries in the system to support sustainable, harvestable populations, but that's our long-term goal, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Just a comment.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to thank Jason for coming this evening and presenting this to us, and, I mean, the health of salmon in our habitats and our areas around us just sort of strengthens and brings health back to our community. I mean, we take care of the flood reduction problems and shoreline repairing stewardship, and a lot of different areas in which are urban, or were urbanized, but within some of the streams and areas are being preserved, replaced, enhanced, and corrected from some of the past practices that have incurred in some of our waterways in our area. So I just want to make sure that we're continuing to work towards support of the salmon. I've been a docent at the Issaquah Hatchery for years and years and years, and so I'm involved with them, but it's important that we're taking, making sure that we're taking care of the habitat, too. So thank you, Jason, for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Jason.
Great. And in addition to my presentation, I do have some folders with some additional information for you all, so I'll hand those out now, if that's all right.
Okay, thank you. So next on our agenda is Sheldon Lin from Public Works Engineering, our director, topic being the Southeast 62nd Street Extension Project.
I'm missing one of my consultants, as they've been stuck in traffic on Highway 99, and they should be here in about 20 minutes, so I'd prefer if you could let the QUAW initiative go next.
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm sure no one's going to be showing up at 7:35 for the QUAW initiative. I apologize ahead of time if we're doing this early.
All right. Charlie Bush, Development Services Director, here to talk to you a little bit about the QUAW initiative. And so it's been a while. In fact, I don't know that we've really ever given a full comprehensive presentation to the council on this topic. It's a project that we actually started in 2012, and it was known at the time as lean and process improvement, and David's going to talk more about our efforts in that area in a little bit. I'm going to talk about how it became QUAW, and what it was in the middle, and some of the things we've done. So again, it's formerly known as lean, and then after that, in 2013, we started doing some work with the high-performance organization model. We had Tony Gardner, a consultant, come in for several trainings with staff, including all of our senior staff. And QUAW is both of those things, but it's also more. It's a lot of who we are as an organization, how we've evolved, and really honoring that, and then continuing to improve as we move into the future. So we actually rebranded this whole thing QUAW, if you didn't get a sense for that. And the way things fit together is, the high-performance organization is really a diagnostic model. It's a whole series of things that you do to determine where you should go. And so there are certain checkpoints, there are things like mission, vision, and core values that you need to have in place, and performance management, but it's really diagnostic, so every organization figures it out for themselves. Within that, one of the tools you use is process improvement to enhance your organization. And for us, that was all great, but it became a lot of jargon. And so we really needed something that our staff could get around, get behind, and get involved with in a more, in their hearts. And so what emerged from a brainstorming session was QUAW, and that's really what the urban dictionary version of it is, and we thought that was pretty neat and pretty appropriate. So again, it's unique to us. It's really Issaquah. No other city in the state, we've been meeting with other cities, has something quite this unique, and so we're quite proud of it. And other city representatives have come up to me recently and said, hey, I want the QUAW training materials, and this and that, and so we love to hear that. We've trained everybody in the organization at this point. We started out, again, with the HPO training, and we've morphed it into what we call QUAW 101. And QUAW 101 is going to be followed by the 200 level, and in the future, likely 300 and 400 level as well. We're continuing to build on it, and a lot of this is HPO. And so HPO, on average, takes seven years to implement. We've been at this since really early 2013, roughly coming up on three years into it. And so the, I think we're ahead of schedule. I think we're looking at about a five-year implementation, which is great, but we're still not there yet. So we've got more work to do, we've got some more pieces to put in place yet. Really, what is it? And what I'm going to describe a lot to you is HPO, and then David's going to follow up with more detail on process improvement and some of the results that we've been able to achieve so far. But what it gets at is doing things better, so higher quality, lower costs, being able to lower the per-unit cost for things that we produce, and being able to do things more efficiently, and to do all of those simultaneously. If you do a whole variety of things, you can set up an environment where those things can all occur. Now granted, we have inflationary factors and everything else, what I just described would be in a static environment, but nonetheless, it's about doing things in these ways. It's definitely about realizing human potential. Organizations historically have, in a lot of ways, through top-down decision-making and other things, have constrained the ability of people to be innovative, to operate to their fullest potential within an organization, and haven't necessarily realized all the gifts and talents that people bring to organizations. And so we're really working hard to set up a system where we get everybody's engagement, and that's the next one, which is employee engagement. And that's about employees being proactive, really having a heart for what they do, and really engaging with each other, engaging with the community and various stakeholders and customers to produce the very best outcomes. So you may have seen this poster around the city in various places internally. These are the mission, vision, and core values that we adopted within the organization about a year and a half ago now. These are really focused, the core values of the salmon across the middle, we wanted something easy to remember. This was developed by an employee committee that had representatives from all different departments at all different levels of the organization. And the real focus of these things is on employee behavior. So these are the things that we thought we really wanted to focus our evaluations on, our hiring on, the environment we created, our recognition programs around being really good at these things. In some cases, we think we are good at them, we'd like to get better. In other cases, we really want to just focus on these things. So for example, we've got in here mastering communication, and every organization I've worked in, communication's a challenge. You can get really good at it, and you're still never quite good enough. And so we really wanted to be intentional about focusing on that. You'll see our vision and mission are very broad, and the idea here is these, these are the things we do internal to the organization so that we can maximize our ability to implement the community vision that you adopted recently, the community mission you adopted recently and the guiding principles. So these two interplay. We work internally on this stuff to be able to do your stuff really well out in the community, and all of it comes together. So this is something we use in our training. Customer alignment is really important to us, and you may find this interesting. We definitely find it comical, but it is so true in many ways. I'll let you absorb that for just a moment, if you'd like. Lot of different interpretations of customers, and there are a lot of different customers. So in our training, we've talked about not just the customer we're directly serving, for example, at the permit center, but there are regulations behind that. We have state regulatory agencies who are customers of ours, your customers of ours is the city council, there are stakeholder groups in the community who are customers of ours in the permit process. There are a lot of customers, and we think about all of them in the way that we go about business. And we're really trying to figure out exactly which customers and which things at which times, so that we can be at our very best in getting outcomes. Anybody know who Ray Kroc was? See some nods. So we talk a lot about high-performing teams in the trainings we do, and we're really focused on that. Teamwork is just critical to getting the best outcomes, and of course, we're selective in the way we use our time. We don't team up on everything, but we team up on a lot of things. And in a city with a lot of business lines, when you think of all the diversity and variety we have within our staff, it's really important for us to use all that diversity that we have to really try to get to the best outcomes. The way you do that is to set up effective teams. Ray Kroc, by the way, founder of McDonald's. Components of QUAW. So this is really getting into it now, or a little bit more. We're talking about performance management, essentially, is what the first item is. So really starting to use data to inform decisions. Examples of this include the performance survey that we recently did, you know, within the community, the citizen survey we did to get feedback. Internally, we use a lot of metrics. You heard recently the pavement management program, for example, some of the metrics that we use to measure the quality of the pavement system and what we think we need to do next to address other items in that area. There are a lot of different things that we use to be analytical, and we're continuing to build upon those and use those to inform decisions that are as high-quality as possible. Collaborative leadership really gets at the way that our organization, like every organization, is set up with a hierarchy, and being collaborative within that hierarchy. In other words, in older organizations in the industrial age, or even newer ones, a lot of decisions would go all the way up the hierarchy and come all the way down. And so one of the goals is to try to have decisions made at the appropriate levels wherever possible, so that we're not only setting up an environment where employees are empowered to act within our value structure and system, but also setting up a system where we really get great outcomes and we're more efficient, because decisions aren't required to go through 10 or 15 different levels. In many cases, that going through 10 or 15 levels really decreases innovation, because a lot of employees, for example, on the frontlines who have ideas, that to send them all the way up and down through a giant hierarchy, by the time those decisions maybe come back down, circumstances have changed, becomes a disincentive to innovating at all. So we're really trying to find that sweet spot where we have a good balance. Obviously, we're a government agency, so there's only so much flexibility within that system, but we're definitely looking to provide as much support to our employees in making appropriate decisions as we can. Leadership at all levels. What we mean by leadership is long-range, so long-term, and strategic. And we're trying to encourage all of our employees to think that way, again, within the boundaries of their positions. In the past, oftentimes in organizations, the expectation was that was all at the top of the organization, all the leadership work happened at the very, very top. To be an innovative organization today with changing circumstances, it's really important to have your entire organization thinking long-term, and thinking and stepping away from their jobs to sort of re-engineer, reprocess, and ask the tough questions of, why do we do what we do, and can we do it differently? And I think more and more in our organization, you'd be less likely to hear people say, well, that's just the way we've always done it, so that's why we do it this way. We're really getting away from that. Do all these things, and you start to become an innovative organization, and we have been in a lot of ways. We're continuing to build on that, and we're continuing to build a better environment to be even more innovative by doing these things. So I believe, I'm turning it over to David now, he's going to cover continuous improvement and where we're headed.
Thank you, Charlie. David Fujimoto, Director of Sustainability with the city. And please feel free to ask questions as we go along, I'd be happy to answer those for you. So Charlie talked a lot about the kind of, the overarching umbrella of QUAW and kind of the people component, and I kind of think about as the people component as being really critical, and then there's the kind of process, the process part, and the two work in synergy to create more innovation, higher performance, and kind of activating the, or enabling the environment for success. And so we're parsing words a little bit here, but I want to talk a little bit more specifically about kind of the process side of the equation, a little bit more nuts and bolts, but thinking about continuous improvement, AKA lean or process improvement as well. But this is really going to the heart of the notion that improvement is an activity that occurs all the time. It becomes a part of the organizational philosophy, and it's something that's supported by our work and our attention to processes, but also the focus and support that's given to our employees and our staff in order to make those improvements. So there's a whole bunch of elements here, talking about customers, the focus there, the goals to improve quality, reducing time, happier customers, our employees can see less stress, we're constantly taxed with additional demands and community needs. If we can be more efficient in how we achieve those goals, that frees up our time to focus on other priorities and to achieve more work. And it's really focused on kind of the everyday practices. A lot of these things come down to very simple tools that can be employed on a day-to-day basis. And it drills down to root causes and thinking about customers and what their interests are as well. So real quick, just some of these tools, and a lot of these tools, and I'll talk about a few of these, but they come through the kind of the lean world, but in this, there are some foundations of those with the Toyota Production System. Those have been adapted from a manufacturing setting, and they really apply to business processes. And so that's what we're doing here in the city, and as Charlie noted, we have a whole range of different services and things that we produce, either as widgets, there are kind of actual products, whether they're roads or road improvements, or whether they're kind of more intellectual outcomes and products of our work. And these principles can apply to all of those, and they apply in different shapes and forms. I'll talk a little bit about five S. It's essentially about preparing your work environment for work and having it orderly and organized, so it's ready to go, essentially. Visual management is providing some cues about things and how they operate and what the systems are with a quick glance, rather than having to read through a report or a chart, and going through those. Kanban boards are also a visual management tool, kind of a way to get a glimpse of what's going on. And then there's some notions about huddles, which is about kind of teams and how they collect and disseminate information in a very quick kind of a way. Gumbo walks, it's a Japanese term, but it talks about kind of going to see where the actual work is occurring, rather than kind of stepping back and seeing from afar, but actually going and understanding what the work looks like. And then there's this notion about wastes, and it's about kind of categorizing them into these eight different areas, but that really goes to the root of process improvement and thinking about, just kind of thinking about how we approach different types of work. And then the other pieces here are about value stream mapping, is really about learning. And then the other pieces here are about value stream mapping is really about looking at processes and looking at them soup to nuts, but not just from kind of your sector of the world, but the overall picture and also thinking about from the customer's perspective. And then this, another tool is about five whys. The idea that if you kind of take any particular situation and ask a very open question, why? And if you pursue that down several steps, you start to get closer to the root causes of why certain things exist. So as I mentioned, five Ss is about essentially preparing spaces for efficient work. And there's been, there's these, the five Ss here, if you will. And they talk about just kind of looking at your environment, cleaning it, making it, making sure that it's organized, looking at your inventory, having the inventory set in a way so that it's ready and accessible. A lot of time over periods of, you know, effort, things get cluttered. And it's, you know, the amount of time that you might spend looking for a part or for office supply, there may be small incremental additions of time, but as you're kind of repeating work, those pieces of time add up. And before you know it, if you apply those across an organization, across weeks and months and years, they add up quite a bit. And there are some simple things that can be done. Some of our city departments are starting to look at this. Public Works Operations, for example, has been doing a lot of work in their parts rooms, looking at their fleet vehicle maintenance as well as their work areas, whether their work benches, even their desks, some of their sign shops and how they're organizing those areas. And down to things like their tire chains that go along with the fleet vehicle trucks and thinking about where those are organized, how they're labeled, and they're now positioned right next to the trucks and ready to go during the snow season so that it's, you don't have to go sort through a separate room to find those, but they're actually ready to go at the moment's notice. Our parks and facilities shop are also been doing some work in reorganizing their storage bays. They're actually looking at common storage bay use by the parks maintenance and building facility maintenance and using common areas and having them well-designed and laid out so that each group can use those and kind of independently, but at the same time. And then there's also some work that you may have heard about with the court, that they are also using lean principles and just some of their working spaces. They have a lot of office processes and forms and materials that they have in tight quarters and just organizing those so that they can process things very efficiently becomes really In terms of a visual workplace, these, the idea here again is to have some pieces in place that give you a visual cue as to the status of things. And some examples up here are from our Public Works Operations shop. And on the right-hand side is they're just doing some work to organize and standardize the chemicals that they use. And so some of the simple things like this tray actually attaches to the wall. They have some chemicals that they will stock as their basic inventory and they all have a place to go. And you can see once they start to get organized that you remove clutter, but you're also having kind of standards for where materials are being used and then also you can see immediately when they're missing. Another notion is kind of the idea of work in progress. And so seeing things that are kind of queued up from planned work, work that's currently being done, and then work that's completed. And the idea with the, it's kind of a sample of a work in progress board up in the upper left-hand side is the other folks that you're working with can come and take a look at a work in progress board and see, oh, this is what's on deck, this is what you're currently working on. So it's clarity of information across the internal working teams. And then the lower example is actually not from the city, but it's an example of inventory control. So three different supplies, you may want to have different levels available at any given point in time. But you can see at a glance that the red, the supplies on the right-hand side are running low, but the supplies on the left-hand side are doing just fine. And that's just a matter of paint on a wall that is able to tell you something at a quick glance about how things stand. As I mentioned before, there's the notion of waste. And there are oftentimes seven wastes that are talked about: overproduction, transportation, inventory, processing defects, and motion. And we also talk about intellect too, which goes to the people's side of the equation. But as you start to think about our various processes and are we producing too much of any given thing? Is there, are there excess approvals? Are things waiting in queue? Do we have to spend a lot of time transporting either goods or ourselves to go to different, to address different customer needs? We spend a lot of time, for example, going back and forth across city hall to deal with things and that's extra transportation. But there's also a lot of things that happen in terms of our review processes as well. So there are a lot of different ways that this can incorporate into our work as well. There's a few examples here in just in terms of some of the operational side of the equation. Simple things like the upper right-hand corner is in our Public Works Operations and they just modified a rack that they had available to be able to have supplies readily available and at hand. Kaizen, you may have heard about some of the Kaizen events and this is another Japanese term, but essentially it's about improving our processes. It actually means change for the better. But we've done a lot of work and a large thanks to Christopher Wright and Charlie Bush for the work in the Development Services Department and spending some time looking at the core business processes in Development Services. And this is a overwhelming snapshot of just a tiny piece of a much larger sections of butcher paper. But basically, a lot of time and effort was spent to actually get everybody in the same room and take a look at how we actually run our processes and what are different pieces are there and then identify where there's wastes, where there's handoffs, what kinds of rework that we see, how much time things take, and really getting to a place where so often we have people that are working on a piece of the overall process but not seeing the overall picture. And so as we start to get everybody in the same room to look at the overall picture, they can see how their, the work they might be doing might be affecting somebody kind of downstream in the process, if you will. And then also thinking about, are we doing things that add value to our customer too? And if they don't add value, are they necessary for some reason? Or can we perhaps modify that and look at some way to improve it, to improve the time or the quality of the work? So the Development Services Department, for example, has looked at the land use permit process, the construction permit process, and then inspection to final closeout in three different pieces. And they've been measuring some of their progress and have seen some pretty good results. But what they found was the land use process was about 162 days and that they could cut that down to about 80 days. And they are starting to see that happen with some of the projects that are coming through town as well. And then with construction permits, about a 92-day kind of overall cycle time and able to cut that down to 42 days. So there's some real tangible benefits to looking at these improvements and spending the time to figure out what does our process look like and how can we make some changes in what we do? And then just kind of jumping back to overall QUO, some of you will be familiar with some of these pieces, but as part of the 2014 budget process, there was, there was some information that was shared about the integration of the inspection services. And what we've seen is that there have been some reductions in costs associated with consolidating those services, but the quality of the services have improved as well with fewer callbacks associated with the inspection services as well. We have a group of facilitators that are trained internally within the city. You have some, you all have some experience with them in the council goal-setting process, but they're also a resource internally to work with various departments. And we've also tapped that group to work in the community for various projects as well. So it's another resource that we have available. We've also seen some real work in terms of our cross-departmental teams. The senior leadership team is an example of that as well. It's all the leadership from the different departments in the city and we've really seen that group gel and start to help us align across departments to reach some of our goals. And then Munis is also obviously a very major project for the city over the next couple of years. And I really think about that as just a gigantic lean project or process improvement project because it touches so many different aspects of how the city does work and it's across departments. It also works with our customers, whether they're bill payers or other folks. So it's changing a lot of things that we do and it's an opportunity to improve the customer experience as a result of it. And so we also wanted to take a moment to thank council because there's an investment that goes along with this. And we've gotten to the point, as Charlie mentioned, where we've trained all city staff on QUO at this point in time. And that's been an investment of time and resources. At first, when we started the process, we brought in some consultants that were helping us to do that. And the great thing about that is we made a path to start to build our internal capacity on that so that we, with the last go-round, we actually have been able to do the majority of the training through staff. So staff have been able to actually train staff on the QUO principles. And so we really appreciate that. That's been an important part. The other piece is that the working relationship between the administration and the council is also critical to this as well because as we're, Charlie saying, was mentioning, as we're making these investments in our staff and encouraging them to make improvements, we know that there's going to be some cases where things may not work out as we had anticipated. And so there's some calculated risks, I think, that are taken there, but some of those risks are trying some ways to improve the way that we serve the community and our customers as well. So that support from the council as we kind of go down this path is really critical. And so we want to thank you for that. And you may see more of it, but you know, know that they're a part of an overall look with a goal of improving our services to the community. And with that is, you know, the idea that we'll have, be spurring some new and innovative ideas. And we'll be looking for those opportunities to be able to demonstrate that value. And I really think about this as the, you know, we're, for local government in particular, we're embarking on an era where we really do have to take a look at how we do things differently and where city hall needs to really be a center of innovation. And some of these are some great tools for us to be able to go there to make sure that we're working efficiently. We can talk about the benefits to the community so that when we propose changes or are making asks of the community, we can know that we're operating efficiently as our local government. In terms of some of the next steps, we're continuing the education with our staff and doing, establishing kind of a QUO university, if you will, kind of a 201 level course to get folks more deeply involved with some different areas, continuing to build our internal capacity. Charlie talked about our core values and that's something that we plan to instill on a regular basis into our organization, make sure folks are aware of them, that they stay alive, that they're actually buying off and supporting them on a regular basis. And we're also continuing to work and align the, all staff towards the goals of the organization, whether those are the core values or whether they're the city's vision, overall community vision, guiding principles and mission as well. And so that effort is ongoing and they all tie into our efforts with the, trying to drive the change in the culture of the organization. And as we continue to align with our, work to align with our customers, because that's a really central focus to that, we would see that there will be new ways in which to engage our citizenry. Kind of the age of assuming that the spoken or the folks that come to the public hearing, I think, is gone and there have to be new and different ways to engage our community. Social media is part of that, but we'll be looking for different opportunities to engage our community, to have them be a part of all of this effort as well. And then finally, Charlie touched upon this, but the city's had a role in helping to develop a more regional presence on this. And so there's a collection of cities that are doing some work with municipal research as well as some folks at the state and bringing together some resources around this so that we can help to drive more change throughout the state and throughout the region. And so the city is not alone for sure in this effort. And in fact, we're starting to be in a leadership role to help ensure that this happens more broadly as well. So with that, we'll take any questions.
Any questions for David or Charlie? Josh?
It's not really a question, but a comment. I'm not sure who our quote "customers" are. And I've heard that term used and I've criticized it before. I certainly don't think that they're our citizens, our community. And I think, David, you in fact separated them and mentioned community and customers as if they were two separate things because our community are not customers. In fact, I'm looking at an article from MSNBC that says, "At its most basic level, the relationship between a business and its customers is anti-democratic. The customer has one major decision to make. She can purchase the business's product or she can spend her money elsewhere. If she's lucky, maybe the business offers her some opportunity to customize the product, et cetera." People aren't purchasing things from the city. In fact, I would argue businesses aren't purchasing things from the city. Businesses are coming to the city to ensure compliance with local zoning ordinances and permitting processes that we've set in place. So it irritates me, I guess, from a fundamental governance perspective, when we use the term "customer service." I totally understand efficiency. I'm on board with everything you're doing. Don't get me wrong. I think all of this is great and it makes for a better performing organization as an entity. But that terminology bothers me on a very deep level because if we were a business, the citizens would not be our customers, they would be our shareholders and our board of directors. And they would be the people who are telling us, the policymakers, what to do and not to do. They're not buying a service or a good from us. So I hope that when we use this sort of terminology, that we do so with the understanding that we're talking about principles of customer service as they're used in the business industry such as providing good quality communication with citizens, such as lean, efficient organizational principles, that we don't treat our citizens as if they were customers and had an opportunity to go elsewhere and buy goods from another service. Because you can't buy your water, your police, your fire from anyone else but the city of Issaquah if you live in this city. So I think there, a distinction needs to be made in everyone's mind when we use that type of terminology. And like I said, I'm not trying to call you out because I think this is all really great, but that phraseology irritates me a bit.
Nina?
Thank you. That's an interesting thought, Josh. I'm going to think about that. I might agree with you in fact. But I had a question about, there's a lot of horizontal in this, but who really, where does the QUO really come from? Who's, who runs the QUO?
The two of us, more or less, are the project managers of QUO. We have great support from the administration, from the directors, and so far from the council as well. And so, you know, this stemmed from this, a lot of these ideas stemmed initially from the administration to get this kind of thing going. But it's very organic and as I mentioned before, it's diagnostic. And so we've all figured it out together. It's been a real full organizational effort as we've gone through it. But David and I ultimately are accountable for the work products.
Okay. And then I had a second follow-up question and that was, we didn't have any packet material to look at before and I also tried to find something on the website and all I found was Camp QUO and that wasn't it. So I wondered if this is, this is something that I would think that the city would be quite proud of and that there could be an element in our communications that told the public and us what it is you're doing with the QUO and what the QUO means. That'd be nice.
I think that's a great comment. I mean, we are still even just working to improve our communications about kind of capturing all the things that are happening that are going well and things also that we're working on internally. So as we do that, we can start to present more of that information out to the community. And then just to briefly comment on your, thank you for your comment, Josh. And you know, that notion of customer is actually one, especially when we look at processes, there's a, we can always have a very robust, I will clearly say it's a robust conversation about who is it that we're talking about that is a part, that is kind of the beneficiary of our process? You know, whether it's a permitting process or whether it's parks class and, you know, who it is that is kind of being served as a result of the widget that's being produced or whatever the case is. And so those are, those are good conversations and it goes all the way down to, you know, from the citizens down to, you know, the fish in the streams. And it really depends on what the case is. So we don't take that lightly at all.
Okay, thank you. And the QUO will be with you. Next up is Sheldon. You're back.
Actually, it's just a question for you. You know, maybe I should know the answer to this, but should we generally expect materials that are for these committee of the whole council meetings to be in the packet? Because I noticed that of the presentations we've had so far this evening, the only one that's actually in the packet that's actually in the packet was the Y-8 presentation.
Yeah, so noted. Agreed. So, but we can continue. So I'm glad your consultant, looks like he's here. Welcome. Glad you could make it. Sheldon, the 62nd Street Extension Project.
Thank you. My name is Sheldon Lynn. I'm the Director of Public Works Engineering. And the intent of this presentation is to update the city council on the progress made as the design continues on the extension of Southeast 62nd Street. And also to introduce you to the principles of the consulting firms that are heavily involved in the design effort and permitting effort. As a reminder, the roadway that we're talking about is a reconstruction of Southeast 62nd through here with a large intersection around about here and our new road extension going across Flood Plain, Two Creeks, and coming over here and tying into Lake Drive as well as improvements up Lake Drive. This project is part of a three-project suite that's in the Costco Development Agreement. This is the second project that we're now beginning to move forward with design to take it from approximately 20 to 30% design level to the 100% level, including permitting and other things necessary to actually advertise for bids for construction. The expected timeline for the design work and permitting and the like is expected to take between 18 and 24 months. And we're expecting to advertise for construction bids in March of 2017 at this point. Recently, the city retained two consulting firms, I should say, a team of consultants. Gray &amp; Osborne is the lead design team. They have a number of subs underneath them. The principal for that firm that's here tonight is Brian Sauerwine. He'll get up and talk a little bit about the progress that's been made over the past month, month and a half on the progress of the design. And then Kay Adams from KBA is a construction management firm to help ensure an excellent design and product at the end. A kickoff meeting for the project design teams was held. And attending that were all the consultants, subconsultants, representatives from the Costco Corporation, as well as their architect and engineer, as we need to make sure we're collaborating and coordinating with Costco plans. And also representation from Development Services Department, Public Works Operations, and Public Works Engineering. Within that meeting, major issues were discussed, timelines were discussed, critical path was discussed, and a timeline for decision-making on these critical path items was also outlined to make sure we can meet the expected schedule. To do that though, this project has a lot of complexities in it. And so we actually established some different disciplinary teams, technical teams, to deal with the issues of transportation, environment, structural engineering, as well as we established an executive committee for oversight over the whole process and making sure that the design team and all the subs were continuing down the correct path to meet the schedule and goals of the city here. On that executive team, executive committee, we have myself, we have Brian Sauerwine, we have Kay Adams, and we also have Keith Thompson, Vice President of Construction from Costco on that as a major stakeholder. So with that, I'm going to introduce Brian Sauerwine now, and he's going to talk a bit about what's been going on in the design over the past month and a half.
Thank you, Sheldon. Let me start by apologizing for my late arrival. There's a little bit of traffic in Seattle tonight. As Sheldon mentioned, my name is Brian Sauerwine. I'm the principal in charge for Gray &amp; Osborne for this project. Basically means I'm managing our internal resources as well as our subconsultant team. We have a bridge subconsultant, sergeant engineers, they're experts in designing various types of bridge structures throughout the state of Washington. We've retained them on this project basically for the design of the bridge over Issaquah Creek, the bridge that will span Issaquah Creek and the North Fork of Issaquah Creek. We have Pangeo geotechnical engineers. They are experts in soil condition analysis, groundwater analysis. We have some interesting conditions out there that they're used to dealing with on projects of this nature. We have an environmental subconsultant, Environmental Science Associates, otherwise known as ESA. They have significant experience working with the city of Issaquah. And their area of expertise is environmental regulatory requirements, mitigation design, minimizing the impacts to the sensitive area. We have Abaco Pacific is a right-of-way acquisition firm. They are currently assisting the city on the East Lake-Samanish Parkway project. And they will be helping out with the right-of-way acquisition that's required on this project as well. We have TSI Traffic Consultants. They will be analyzing, performing traffic modeling, looking at things like the function of the intersections, including the roundabouts and signalized intersection in East Lake-Samanish Parkway, to make sure that when this project is complete, that everything's functioning from a traffic standpoint the way that it should. And we have APS Utility Locate Services. Basically, they go out and help us find existing buried utilities. We're working in a corridor that's partially developed on the east end as well as on the Lake Drive portion. And so we want to know exactly where those buried utilities are to the best of our ability to avoid potential issues during construction. So we have, we have a large team. Many of those members have been working with Gray &amp; Osborne over the last four-plus years and city staff during the initial conceptual work that included preliminary design and cost estimating. So everybody's been working on this project for quite some time and is very familiar with it. Work that we've completed to date, basically, we started this design phase, the 60% design phase, in February of this year. So we've had survey crews on site, performing topographical survey, basically getting a base mapping created for our design of this project. And that survey work is probably about 90% complete. Upcoming work this week actually includes delineating wetlands. If you're familiar with the area, there's a large number of wetlands out there. So we go through a process where ESA comes in and delineates those wetlands so we know exactly what their limits are. We're trying to minimize our impacts on those sensitive areas, including the wetlands. So we know where most of those are and they should be finishing that work up this week. We also, as Sheldon mentioned, we had some kickoff meetings with the subcommittees, basically getting everybody in communication and coordinating with each other to start the design phase. We also have been updating the base mapping that was started during the 30% design phase and accumulating record drawings and things of that nature from Costco and utility companies in the city to pull together all of the existing infrastructure that's out there so we're aware of the various conditions and elements that exist today. The upcoming work in the next few weeks is going to be trying to better define the horizontal and vertical alignments, especially of Southeast 62nd, which, as Sheldon mentioned, includes the new bridge and the new roadway connection over to Lake Drive. One of the key elements of this design project is the environmental permitting and figuring out what the footprint is of all the proposed improvements. Because it's, has, it's an environmentally sensitive area, we're trying to minimize that footprint through this area. So a lot of what we're doing in the next months actually is fine-tuning the design and trying to minimize the impacts to the adjacent areas. And so that can be everything from looking at the size of the roundabouts to the configuration of the trails that are out there and the alignments of the new roadway, placement of storm drainage facilities, all of that's going to have an effect on the overall footprint of what we see out there and the permitting. Sheldon commented about the schedule. So we're right now just beginning the 60% design phase. And that'll probably, that'll last for a few months toward, through the end of this year. And final design would be late 2016 with construction, early 2017. We'll look to expedite that if we can, but we want to make sure we look at all these components of the project as they need to be addressed. That's kind of just a brief overview of where we're at and some of the work that's upcoming. I don't know if I can turn it over to Kay or if there's any questions that you might have about the design and where we're at today. I can certainly try to answer those.
Josh and then Tola.
Thanks. In terms of the bridge structure itself, I'm not sure if we're going to have pylons or what the supporting structure is, but I think of, you know, pylons going into soft soil, you know, with a water table. And I worry about the integrity of the structure and maybe you could just briefly in a nutshell talk about what steps are being taken in the design to ensure that the structure will be sound and not subject to any sort of shifting soils.
Right. So one of our subcommittee meetings is the structural and basically the bridge, the bridge design group. And we've had one of those meetings so far and that was what you just mentioned is the main focus of that meeting. The soils out there are not the best soils. There's compressible soils. There is shallow groundwater, excuse me, shallow groundwater and groundwater pressure. So we will, as we continue the design, there's going to be additional geotechnical explorations as we figure out where the bridge, if it's going to end up on that alignment that we see on the screen there. We're going to go out and have additional geotechnical borings taken in the actual pier locations so we can pin down as much as possible the exact conditions at those pier locations. We've had some initial discussions about the types of piers. There are many different types of piers that can be constructed as part of a bridge project. Given the conditions we have out there, there are certain pier types that you don't want to construct, given like the groundwater pressure, for example. So we're in the process of narrowing that down. It's not final yet, it's still in discussion, but that is something where we have the geotechnical engineers, the bridge engineers, city staff, KBA, the GNO team in there talking about those different options and looking at other available information around from similar projects. Our geotechnical engineers do this all the time, our bridge engineers do this. And we've, we've been taking the process kind of slowly to make sure everybody's on the same page. And so far, I think it's been a really good discussion. The options that we've kind of eliminated, everybody seemed on board with. So, and that's, that's one of the keys. There's, you know, anytime you work on a bridge, there are certain risks and challenges. We're really trying to minimize those risks and challenges by going out and identifying the soil conditions at those locations where those piles are going to go down into the ground. So that's a, that's a great question. It's just a lot of attention to detail on it is basically what we need to do.
Next.
Tola?
Two questions. The first is, and I'm looking at this drawing and I'm not entirely sure what I see, but it looks like at the western end by Lake Drive, you sort of have two streets next, sort of running in parallel to each other for a bit, one that dead-ends and the other that continues on onto the bridge. Is that, is that what I'm seeing?
On the south side of 62nd, if you could see the green spot, that's the center of a proposed roundabout at Lake Drive and 62nd. And going east or to your right, that's the new roadway. Immediately south of the new roadway is the trail. That trail will probably be reconstructed in about the same location. So it's a fairly wide trail, so it's not actually a roadway down there, it's a, it's a trail.
I guess it's the purple, the purple made me, made it look like it was going to be a dead-end road for some reason. The second question that I have is, do we, so in the last 30 years or so, there's been a growing realization seismically of the Seattle Fault and what that means for, for large structures. Has code changed to reflect that or has the, has the implementation of how large structures get built in Issaquah changed as a result of the emerging understanding of the Seattle Fault?
I can, I can comment in general on that. Sheldon may be able to comment a little bit too, but our structural engineers and our geotechnical engineers could probably be more specific and answer specific questions about maybe when the code has changed. But we are looking, because of the poor soils out there, we're looking at, you know, the liquid, tongue twister, liquefaction fact, possibilities during a seismic event. So that's, and we've actually had some discussions about that as well. I'm sorry, I can't, I can't comment on when the codes have changed, but obviously the Nisqually event a few years back changed a few people's views on that.
Which, which did cause soil liquefaction very close to here, right?
Right, right, right. So that is, that's a, that's a concern and is addressed during the design of the project. And Pangeo is very familiar with those codes and requirements as well as sergeant engineers, the bridge engineers, so. I can, I can get probably, if you want to know specifics about different code changes, I could, I could ask the geotecs and the structural engineers to provide that to you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Nina?
A question, it might be for Sheldon though. And I'm sorry, it might be a little bit out of left field if you want to table it to another discussion. I'm just now thinking of 221st, which goes off the north end of the roundabout, and how the project that is east-west impacts the traffic and that road to the north. And are there intentions to address that?
If you could clarify what your question is about impacts.
221st, in this project, does it, does this project anticipate impacts on 221st going northmound and do we have plans here or is that a separate project?
This project anticipates construction impacts, certainly. Not really anticipating additional flow of traffic on 21st, other than what's there today. Actually, this, the traffic that's on 21st today is traveling up here to go on Samanish Road primarily to enter the Pickering Center. Most of the traffic is going to come here and go around the roundabout and come in.
Okay. Thanks.
Great, thank you.
I'd like to introduce Kay Adams of KBA.
Thanks. Thanks, Sheldon. Appreciate your time tonight. Thanks for the opportunity to speak about this project. We've been talking to Sheldon and the city staff for quite some time. We knew, we've known that this project's coming up and we're really excited to get a chance to work with, with this group. It's a project that the city has an opportunity to build something that's going to be there 100 years or more, maybe longer, depending how long, I guess, until the next earthquake hits. But I'll, I'll answer the one question real quick about the seismic. Last year, eight of our projects were seismic upgrades for bridges. That was because of the new codes, the new bridges are now being required to upgrade seismically and, and the new standards are out. And so we will want to make sure that as we build this bridge, it meets all the current seismic requirements and that's, that's important. One of the things that Sheldon talked about was the coordination between the city, the design staff, and then the regulatory groups. And I'd just like to point on that just a little bit. There's a lot of moving pieces and parts on this project. This project isn't quite as simple as just purple lines on a piece of paper and it's, it has a lot of things. For instance, I don't know how many of you know, but they'll be moving a portion of the North Fork. They'll be adding stormwater to these sections, realigning 62nd is quite a big deal. You've got right-of-way purchases and takes and things. I guess what I'm trying to say, there are a lot of intricate parts to this project. It's not just a simple, take a backhoe out there and dig a hole and build something. It's really a lot of things. One of the reasons that we're excited about this is, this is what we do. This is what KBA does. We're a construction management, project management firm. All we do is construction management, building projects, and then coordinating projects through to the end. We've been around for about 20 years now. I think we celebrated our 20th year last year. And I, And I, I've been with the firm almost nine years now. Previous to that, I was in front of my own council in Yakima. I don't know how many of you know, there's a connection between Issaquah and Yakima. I don't know if you knew that or not, but about 12 years ago, Issaquah was looking at getting a trolley system going in, in the city. And Yakima has a trolley system. We have that running every year and it's up and running. And I remember Issaquah coming and asking us if we'd provide a trolley. So I got our group together. We thought, you know, this would be cool. Let's send one of our trolleys to Issaquah and send it up there to those guys and see what they think. And it, so Issaquah had it here for quite some time. I think it was almost six, seven, eight months testing and doing some things with it. And when it, and when it came back, it was filled with Krispy Kreme doughnuts. It was the greatest thing. I had an opportunity to run around to all the council members and deliver Krispy Kreme doughnuts the next day. That was really a lot of fun. But getting back to this project, we really look forward to the opportunity to build something that the community is going to embrace and take on. It, it gives me a large sense of personal pride in myself to have an opportunity to build something of this magnitude. This is going to be a, a big help for the city as far as transportation, as far as getting in and out and providing service to the, I use that word service, I don't know if I'm in trouble for that, but using service to the general motoring public as they come in and out of the, of the area. And I look forward to working with Sheldon and, and with Brian, with GNO. We've worked with all of these consultants and subconsultants on various projects and they've all been very successful. We hope that this is also going to be one of those.
All right, thank you.
If there are any questions.
Any other questions or comments? Josh?
A follow-up. So first of all, just kudos to Sheldon and his team for leveraging funds to get this project going because it wasn't only part of the Costco development agreement, but also additional outside funds. And Sheldon did a great presentation, ETP, on how we were able to leverage TIB funds and other sources for getting this going. So that was really great to help the community. In terms of the, the construction schedule, you know, obviously it would seem to me that the intersection is going to have to be closed for a period of time because I'm not sure, you probably just can't plop a roundabout down, you know, from above. So how long would that intersection be out of commission for use?
That's one of the constructability items we're looking at as we go forward with the design process. It will be for a time period. It's not going to be short. But that's one of the things that I've also already began conversations with the city's PIO to ensure that we have the proper outreach well in advance of this project even going to construction so that at the end of the day, when announcements are made about road closures and things of that sort, the public is already going to be well aware of it and is, it's almost going to be, you know, like the public's tired of hearing about it. And so the goal is making sure that people are very well aware because it will be a substantive closure for a period of time.
And the, the other concern I had, and I guess it'll probably be resolved with the transportation consultants that were mentioned that'll come out after it's operational, is just, you know, at peak hour, everyone coming out of the Costco development and then into the roundabout to get to Lake Spanish Parkway. And it's a fairly small, even with the additional turn or whatever that is curve, you know, small distance between the roundabout and the signalized intersection. And, you know, the one thing that concerns me a bit, and I guess the studies will have to show, is backing up into the roundabout and affecting traffic on 221st and Northeast Fourth that are trying to not make a turn, but rather just go straight one direction or the other. And I experienced roundabout failure this morning myself over by exit 13 at I-90 where the ramp was just too far backed up and so cars started just backing up into the quasi roundabout thing that takes you onto the 90 ramp, but.
The operations of that intersection tied in with that whole queuing from East Lake Spanish Parkway is going to be a challenge. If you recall, in the council's deliberations about its concurrency and impact fees, this was an item that Torsten identified as a potential intersection for falling below level of service. We're modeling it for the 20, 30-year to make sure that we're meeting the level of service that's expected under the concurrency. So that is being addressed.
And one other thing, it was related to Nina's question that reminded me, on 221st, we still have a additional phase of what was the undercrossing project that would address 221st and the roadway there. Isn't that correct?
Right. We have to add a CFP project to bring that section of 221st north of here back into the radar screen for funding. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, well, thank you Sheldon.
Thank you.
Thanks for our consultants for being here as well. Appreciate your presentation and your information. And next item on the agenda is, is the citizens input survey for council goal setting and Autumn Monahan is here to do the presentation. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Autumn Monahan. I'm the Assistant to the City Administrator. I'm going to give a very brief presentation tonight about the community input we received to kind of kick off the city council goal-setting process. So to start out, we created a webpage, which we did last year. The webpage includes a timeline, kind of breaks down the process for the public on how council sets its goals. We included a list of past goals, also links to our new city vision, guiding documents, and then also an area where the public could provide their own input. So we asked two questions, which were the same questions we asked last year. So what's the most important issue facing Issaquah and then how should it be addressed? From our website, we received 42 responses from 36 participants. The reason there's two different numbers up there is that some participants provided more than one response. This, this number is lower than last year, mostly because we had a really short timeline. We wanted to make sure that you had that input before you guys are submitting your goals for consideration. To help with reporting this year, we decided to ask the participants to, to enter their responses by a category. So these are the categories that they were provided and they also mirror the same categories that you'll see in your council worksheets as you're filling out your goals. The three that are highlighted in green had the most responses from our website. So environmental sustainability, public safety, and transportation, which interestingly enough are some of the top priorities the city's survey indicated from the National Research Center. So we provided many different avenues to reach the public on submitting this input, including our website, which I mentioned, Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, Google+. We also included this in Issaquah Insider and then the school district's e-news, which reaches a large population, all the parents within the district. And so with that, if you have any questions, all of the input is provided in your packet, including submissions we got both through the website and also via social media. So if you have any questions for me, yeah.
Is it still open for, for input?
It's not, no.
Bulls are due. So I thought it was going to be open longer than that. It was going to be open for three weeks. How long was it open for input?
It was open for two weeks so that we could collect the responses to provide you the, the input.
Okay. Mary Lou then Josh.
Autumn, last year, this first ca- was it last year, the first year that we did this?
Mm-hmm.
I thought it had a pretty good response, but I was expecting the response to grow. Do you have any thoughts on why we received less information this year?
So last year, we provided, it was close to eight weeks where the input was open for people to submit feedback. But if you remember, a lot of that was after you guys submitted your, your initial goals. So this time, we shortened the process so that we could ensure that you had some input before you crafted your goals. So the difference is just, I would, would think it's the two weeks versus eight weeks of how, how much it was open, so.
Josh?
So I was going to say something related to that as well, which is just in terms of going forward in the future, you know, ways that we could improve that communication because, you know, you mentioned, we sent it out to all these platforms and lots and lots of people.
Right.
And we got 36 responses.
Mm-hmm.
Hmm. Maybe the next time we do it, a different strategy, you know, I don't know what that strategy would be off the top of my head, but it just seems like if we're sending it out to that many locations and fora, that we should be getting more than 36 responses because I assume that a lot of people, if you went to their door, they would tell you they care very much about these sort of issues. But, you know, for whatever reason, they're not clicking on Facebook or Twitter, you know, to tell us that directly. So I don't know to develop a strategy for the next time, next year's goal-setting maybe. So that would just be a thought. And then in terms of the actual, you know, things, the citizen comments themselves, you know, it's, it's interesting. You know, there's definitely the traffic and there's definitely the, the environment issues, but there's another theme that I see in here as well, which is just in terms of the, the growth of the city, which relates to the traffic and environmental preservation. And so there seems to be a real concern about, you know, a continued focus on growing and that's going to necessitate more road building and people wanting us to actually do something about that to keep up with the rapid pace of growth that we're experiencing. And so that's not really a category per se on the survey. There wasn't, you know, a box saying, you know, growth. But I think, you know, I just want to point out that it relates and it underlies perhaps many of the comments that we've seen here.
And to get back to your first point too, you'll, you'll find some people will take the time to just send, you know, one-sentence response on Facebook and you'll see a lot of that or on Twitter. And they won't take the time to click on it, go to our survey, provide us their name, their email, the information. So we're trying to reach a broader audience and get a little bit more feedback through social media that isn't really categorized in that report, which is why I kind of showed it separately. So we did get more than just, you know, the 36 responses. We did reach more people. So we definitely reached thousands via social media, but it's just a matter of who wanted to provide the, the input, so.
Anybody else have any comments about the survey? So because this, the germane topic are council goals, I just, I did want to take this opportunity, the, your submittals are due a week from today. And also I think it's important, so I'm speaking for myself, but I want everybody to, to give this consideration. I'm not going to be submitting any goals just for the sake of submitting a goal. You know, the, obviously and as this survey repeats common messages that we've been hearing for a while, if I have nine, 10 thoughts about city issues right now, nine of them are about traffic and congestion. And we're undertaking, you know, we've done quite a bit with concurrency, but that's just one step in a process and we know that we're looking at the Mobility Master Plan. So that's just something that I'm thinking about, how, you know, that's a really nice chunk of work that we're already committed to and, and the options for goals that I am considering, I'm weighing them against that existing work, for example. So I just, I'm just putting that out there as food for thought. And, and so, you know, you can discard it or accept it as you see fit. But other than that, I just want to thank Autumn and your staff and the administration for their assistance with the survey. I think, I think the number one, my recommendation for whomever might be managing this next year is, we get it stood up earlier. It, it just didn't get up in time to, because the, one of our goals was to get this feedback so all of us could consider it during, still during the goal formation time. And so we kind of had a date when we wanted it to be complete and then put in a package for our consideration prior to tonight. And so, and so hopefully next year, or if we continue it, it would just be out there and available earlier, longer exposure. So, okay, well with that, thank you Autumn.
Yeah, thanks.
Appreciate it. So that concludes our regular agenda for the meeting. There is one last item and it's, it is, it's titled regional, excuse me, reports on regional activities slash issues. Now, is this exactly the same on regional committees that we do at our regular council meetings? You know, that's something that we report on regularly and we're going to continue to do that. So I'm, I'm really going to open it up towards more if there, because we will, you know, twice a month, we get every, reports from everybody on the regional committees who have those reports. So if there's anything, and I'll just, it'll just be, you know, speak up if you want to give a report or raise an issue, if there's a policy question coming at us from the Public Issues Committee or something from EFER or any new insight about the ILA coming from Wyra 8 or any of those things. Josh?
Just a reminder that at some point, I'm going to be looking for guidance and input on issues pertaining to ETP's work plan. As I mentioned at the last council meeting, the inter-local agreement with King County and the member jurisdictions is due to expire, but automatically renew for another two years. And so if there's any feedback on that, we committed to going back to our member jurisdictions. And then at some point, I'm expecting to hear some information from the administration on the potential or non-potential for providing staffing to the TAC, the Technical Advisory Committee. And I certainly welcome any individual council members' comments that can be passed on to the administration about interest in having us provide staff or not. And I don't know enough detail at this point concerning what the, the position will be of the administration on that issue, but if there's any individual council members who want to discuss that with me, that way I can take back a more informed voting approach to the body on behalf of our city. And then secondly, Representative Jessen Farrell is confirmed for our April ETP meeting and she's on the House Transportation Committee. And so she will be there. Representative Rodney was there in March and so it'll be a great opportunity if you're able to attend to hear from someone on the committee who has a direct pipeline into the ongoing discussions about transportation issues in the state.
Thanks for that reminder. And so I actually do have a question for you for the TAC, the Technical Advisory Committee Charter. Do you have that available? And then the participation and the actual expectations of, of our participation if we were to support having somebody assigned to that?
The great question. The Planning Committee for the partnership is tasked with formulating more cohesive work plan for what that would entail. And there were a lot of comments at the March meeting about how the role of that potential TAC reconstitution is ill-defined. In the past, it used to recommend specific projects to the partnership, which would then be voted on and passed along for consideration in the PSRC scoring process. Then that just sort of fell by the wayside. And so there were a lot of questions about, well, what exactly is this going to do? And Mayor Bernie Talmes of Woodinville, who's the Chair of the Planning Committee, has suggested that we look at utilizing the TAC to provide us with recommendations about projects, to provide us with advice and input that's very difficult for the members of the partnership to get and to have that expertise from lots of jurisdictions to be able to bring to the table. So that seems to be the direction that things are headed. I expect that the Planning Committee will provide me with a more detailed report so that I can bring back to you and to the administration what it is that they're hoping to accomplish. We may end up voting on this at the next meeting. We may not. I don't know. It's, it's noticed for potential action. I wanted to get our city's individual position, but I can only speak for us and I don't know what the other members will choose to do. It could be reconstituted and we may choose not to participate. It may not be reconstituted. It may be reconstituted for a totally different purpose. So it's still in flux a bit at this time and so I appreciate your question because I can't give you those sort of specifics tonight, but I'm hoping to follow up with Mayor Talmes and the other Planning Committee members on that.
All right, thank you.
For the order?
Sure, Eileen.
For just a good of the order, I would just like to let everyone know that Fish, Friends of Issaquah Salmon Hattery, has hired a new executive director. Jane is going to be leaving us unfortunately after many years and great service to us. But Karen is coming in with history of the Fish. She has been our educational coordinator a number of years ago and will now be returning as Executive Director of the organization and we're looking forward to having her with us. And I'll make sure that, we encourage her to come in and stop in and say hi to everyone and, and get to know us as a council. stop in and say hi to everyone and get to know us as a council, so.
And what's her name?
Karen Kane.
All right, thank you. Mary Lou?
I was thinking there's a council meeting on Monday, but there isn't. So just today, the Land and Shore Council meeting for April was canceled. And I've let the other committee members know, but I think I'd just like to say it out in public that we're not going to have it on April 2nd, I think, been canceled. So we will have the May meeting, but not the April one.
Okay. Any other regional topics for discussion? Okay. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Bob. Thank you for your attendance. This meeting is adjourned.